This is regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October 1st, 2025. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In addition, a copy of all staff reports and other relevant documents for the matters to be considered by the Planning Commission are included in a binder that is located on the dais and is available to the public for review. Out of courtesies for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action is final on the following items. Item 1.1, Special Permit 16004C and Item 1.2, Special Permit 25035. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 17th, 2025.
So move Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Epstein.
Joy?
Yes.
Minutes approved. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will now ask Shelley to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there's anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
I want to please note that Agenda Item 1.2, Special Permit 25035 is being removed from the consent agenda and moved to public hearing today. Also, I will note that Item 1.3, Special Permit 25036 is being removed from the consent agenda for separate action for a request for a two-week deferral. Item on the consent agenda is Item 1.1, Special Permit 16004C for the renewal of soil mining and excavation permit on property generally located at Saltillo Road and South 68th Circle. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this item?
No, there are not.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
No, there are not.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this consent agenda item?
Hi, my name is Don Miller.
Okay.
Now, it'll be just a minute.
We'll have to now move it to public hearing for this item.
And this is for Special Permit 16004C?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll now go to requests for deferral.
I would move that we approve the deferral of Special Permit 25036 for two weeks.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fite?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Request for deferral approved.
Sure. Is there a date and time that Item 1.2 wished to delay or is it just unknown?
Request for deferral for Special Permit 25035, or 2536, excuse me, will be on, for two weeks on October 15th.
235 is what I was questioning.
235 will be public hearing for today.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. So, seeing that, we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, or do we need, is that how we, is that how we?
Yeah, continue with that.
Brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present their testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or include as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired and once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
First item will be 1.1, which is on the consent agenda. Special Permit 16004C for the renewal of soil mining excavation permit on property generally located at Saltillo Road and South 68th Circle. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
There are not.
George Russellhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So this is the first of two excavation special permits that are on today's agenda. This first one is located at the southwest corner of South 68th Circle and Saltillo Road. Nebraska Highway 2 is on the south side of the site. The request is on approximately 133 acres with 87.61 acres being disturbed for the soil mining activities. This site was first granted a special permit in May of 2016 for excavation and then there was a three-year extension granted in 2018 and an additional three-year extension was granted in 2022. So this would be the third renewal of this special permit. The site geography has not changed, it's essentially the same site. LTU watershed notes that the channel along the east side of the property at the edge of the excavation area will need to be evaluated for minimum flood corridor. This is a condition of approval, the regulations regarding the flood corridors have changed since the last approval and the county engineer supports the renewal of the permit subject to an updated road maintenance agreement, truck route, erosion control and sediment plan and other updates to the site plan information. And I would mention that John Berry with the County Engineers Office is here today to answer any questions about this excavation permit or the next one that's on the agenda. With that, I can answer any questions.
We have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. I don't have much more to say from what George said. This is, as you all know, special permits for mining permits are the only ones that expire after the three-year period. So this pit has been very useful in the construction of the South Beltway. Now it's going to be used for the West Beltway project. So with that, we've met all the conditions and be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
We do not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will take testimony in support of this application. Testimony in a neutral capacity, testimony in opposition. Please come forward. Well, we appreciate you stepping up because it helps really, help us really understand which one you want pulled off.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yeah, this is for Special Permit 16004C.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Don Miller at 5701 Saltillo Road, Lincoln.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to oppose this permit because of the traffic and how they're beating up Saltillo and also they use their Jake brake, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but engine braking, you know, just for spike. And I've called Gainon several times and I received no action. I don't know if we need, the other neighbors were supposed to be here, but idle talk. And that's really my concern is the noise and it continues and I don't know if they need to disable the braking system on the trucks or what are they need to do or if they're just doing it from gears. But the other concern I had is this is in a school zone, was Standing Bear School. I don't appreciate the traffic, plus the school traffic. That's about all the opposition I have for it.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for this gentleman? Okay, thank you for your testimony. Any other testimony in opposition? Staff questions? Maybe just one, George? What would be the process for us to communicate to the contractors that are utilizing the site on reducing some of the different noise or maybe the Jake braking, that type of thing?
The Health Department would regulate noise concerns if there were concerns about the truck operations that might fall under the road maintenance agreement with the county engineer.
And when you spoke previously, you talked about that the east side will be reevaluated per the request and then also there has to be a new traffic plan put together?
Yes, there would be an updated truck route that would go to the county engineer for review and that east side drainage area is a new requirement as far as the flood corridors. That was an LTU watershed comment.
Okay. And then just lastly, would this testimony and record be something that will move forward for the applicant to utilize in their traffic report? Or maybe that's a question for?
Yeah, I might let John Berry speak to the
Okay.
traffic related questions.
Good afternoon, John Berry, Lancaster County Engineering. On all these, on all these borough sites throughout the whole county, we do require a road maintenance agreement. Those agreements do require that if they have, that if any more than four loads are hauled out of any site a day, we are notified. At that point, we can have our road superintendents go out and take a look at it, make sure the roads are in good shape. Saltillo Road's a little bit different here because it's under, you know, it's going to be part of a project here in the next couple of years, which is also going to be state and federally funded. So we do want to keep really good track of that road. So as far as the braking, again, I think that's more of a Health Department kind of a thing. But, but when they do get too many trucks on that road, they are required to let us know. At that point, we evaluate the road and if we can figure out the damages caused by them, they are required to either reimburse us to fix the roads or come up with some kind of a language which we can take care of. If they, if they do not abide by these, we do have, it's in the agreement, a right to shut them down. So, you know, there is a lot of stuff in the road maintenance agreement and, you know, we work with Mike quite a bit, so Mike's very much aware of all this stuff.
Unfortunately, we cannot take any testimony or conversation from the audience, but thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, I have concerns on this one because of the new school, which when they were previously granted, the school wasn't there and now we got young drivers traversing Saltillo, which they're not even up to full capacity yet. So that's just going to increase dramatically every year. What type of safety can we put in place to protect those kids riding that?
I think that would be something more that would be a Sheriff Department kind of a question, I'm not sure. Again, we can monitor the number of loads, you know, we can't necessarily control, you can only have this many on there. There are, there are requirements in the road maintenance agreement for when they can haul. Usually it's daylight hours. Unfortunately, that is sometimes when the kids are out there. There are stop signs there, you know, Saltillo is monitored, you know, with stoplights. There are the roundabouts and things like that. But to control accidents, I wish there was an answer to that. I wish everybody could control all that stuff, but it's hard to do that.
So do you know on average how many times they go over those four loads a day? Are they like a continual or occasionally?
That'd be something I could find out, I guess, I don't know if Mike knows, but I really don't know. I could talk to our maintenance people and find out.
I'll piggyback off of your question, Gloria. So are you the office that approves their route so that they choose Saltillo over a different road?
South 68th Circle, it's a dead end on the south end.
They can't do it.
So it only goes up to Saltillo Road. Once it hits Saltillo Road, you know, then it changes.
Gotcha.
So there's only the one really, the only one route in and out there, allowed one driveway, one access and that is onto 68th Street or Circle.
Okay, thank you. Would the, is LTU involved in this at all? For traffic flow with the school and understanding whether it's way too busy or any, are they not involved?
LTU engineering reviewed and did not have any concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Applicant, please.
So yes, appreciate the questions and we are the applicant, not the operator. I know that a lot of their trips will go out up 60, South 68th Place and take a ride to get on the Beltway now for a lot of, depending on where they're going. As John mentioned, the Carger Road, Carger Road has a roundabout, that's one of the entrances to Standing Bear on 68th Street and then there's their other entrance also has a roundabout. So there are traffic calming devices in there for this and so and given that this is our third renewal, I think this permits operated under pretty good circumstances. We've done other permits for Gainon and they do a good job and so I'm more than happy to speak with the neighbor here, get on my card so I can make sure they get directly communicated with the person that runs this site as well as the person, Jake Whitefoot, who kind of manages all these permits. And so, and as John said, South 68th Street is, or excuse me, Saltillo is obviously under, in the process of a reconstruction design package. It'll take it all the way from the 68th Street interchange, or 70th Street interchange it is now, all the way to the 27th Street or Jamaica interchange. And so, and I think Gainon always reminds me that they pay a great amount of taxes for those trucks to travel on the public roads and so that's another item to keep in mind. But yeah, we want them, we want them to be compliant. I know Jake wants them to be compliant, this is a big part of their business is these mining permits and unfortunately in the construction world, there's just times when sites need dirt or sites have excess dirt that have to come out of there. I do think they, if they have to go north, they either use the Beltway or they go up 68th Street. But we're more than happy to work with John and the county on some preferred routes and some routes that should not happen and they've got an enforcement mechanism, the Health Department has an enforcement mechanism. So I think maybe now that the neighbors are aware of that, they can go through that channel. But I'll be sure that I get them in communication with some direct people at Gainon regarding their concerns.
That would be fantastic. Thank you for doing that. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any idea of how much longer this site can be mined? Because as kind of to Gloria's point, there wasn't a school there before, the whole area is becoming less and less rural. Is this, like, do they anticipate another three, like, how much longer?
You know, it's hard to say. This land is part of a coalition that's called the South Beltway Coalition. It'll be coming before you guys shortly with Kent Seacrest and we have actually been directed by the owners of this property to start working on concept plans for urbanization. So there's a plan to get sanitary sewer, it's a long ways. Comes down the railroad's track by 27th Street and then it'll stay on the north side of the Beltway the whole way. This site may develop sooner than later because there's a water main that was brought down for Standing Bear that could be extended to this site. So, and that's, you're going to see this coming through shortly. It's a very, very big comprehensive plan amendment annexation agreement. And so currently the goal is to get the sewer to this property by the 2027, 28 timeframe. Water main extended perhaps in the same time. So my best guess is that in the next three-year period, this will stop after that. In that, as you would imagine, once land has sewer and water becomes valued urban lots and commercial area, the mining pit will move further out somewhere else. So that's, I see it ending in that timeframe just because of what's going on with that other application.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move in closing the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fite?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Special Permit 16004C.
Second, Edens.
Okay, who would like to start?
Just to go on, I think there are mechanisms that are available to the neighbors. If there's loud noise or breaking activity that is of problems, those systems do exist. This has been in operation now for, what, over 10 years? And so I think their continued use for another three years is not inappropriate.
I am frustrated at that we put a three-year limit on these and then we just continually approve them. So we give neighbors the impression, A, we're going to be done in three years, when there's no intention of it being done in three years, we're going continually. So I think our wording on that to begin with, not necessarily on this one in particular, needs adjusted or somehow so that these neighbors can expect, hey, this is for the long haul and we're going to have mining operations next year. I do have concerns with the school there, but I think it can be worked out with the owner and I hope Mike follows through and gets this neighbor, especially ending Jake braking, that's just, just stop it. That's a simple win. The damage to the road, this road will be redone, so I'm not as concerned about that. I think LTU and the traffic experts, for lack of better words, will keep track of what they're doing to the land. But I think a conversation with the neighbor, I always recommend that. Have a conversation with the neighbor. But I will be approving it. There, that's the long way to get to, I'm a reluctant yes.
Oh, yeah, I'll add to Gloria's comment about the three-year and the only, I mean, one positive I see is that now that some changes have been made to watershed rules and regulations is that this comes back to us and they recheck the site and make sure that's all working correctly and appropriately and safely. So I do, I do kind of appreciate the having to come back to us, but I agree. It does give the wrong sense that, oh, this will be done and we just have three years of this and, but I will support it. It sounds like they've been good uses of the land and again, with that future development, I do foresee an end to this, so I'm in.
I agree with my fellow commissioners, I'll be supporting the motion. I do appreciate the testimony and then the willingness for everyone to work together and also develop solutions that work well with the school. So thank you for that. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fite?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Shelley, would you call the next item, please?
Yes, Item 1.2, Special Permit 25035 to allow soil mining and excavation on property generally located at West McHulby Road and Northwest 40th Street. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No, there are not.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting? Any of this site to be disclosed?
No, there are not.
Thank you. So this request for soil excavation is located near Northwest 40th Street and West McHulby Road at the southwest corner of that intersection. The property consists of approximately 190.48 acres with 20 acres being disturbed for the soil mining activity. So this is the site plan. The soil mining activity will be in the northeast part of the property on 20 acres, fairly close to the intersection of the two streets. There will be one access point off Northwest 40th. This next drawing here shows the truck route, which the trucks will not travel north, they will travel only south on Northwest 40th to Highway 34 and Purple, or Purple Heart Highway. Northwest 40th is a county gravel road to Highway 34. There was a water report submitted as well because of the proximity of private wells in the vicinity and that report indicates that the groundwater levels in nearby wells will not be adversely affected by the excavation. Health Department did review that groundwater report and they concur and recommended approval. Finally, I would mention that there is a road maintenance agreement that was approved last month already for this project and that does cover restoration or maintenance of the physical road, dust control. Some of the letters, or the letters that were received covered those areas and those are addressed by the road maintenance agreement, which John Berry can respond to any detailed questions on that.
Great. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Joe Brockenhoff with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 2077 N Street. On behalf of the owner... On behalf of the owner and operator, you know, they're looking to mine topsoil and lean clay for local construction projects, not so dissimilar to the previous application. I don't really have a lot to add from what George has already said, but if you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Why that part, why those 20 acres?
It's at the top of the hill, so that's, they did some borings through a geotechnical company, and so that's where they've identified the best material for lean clay, so that's where they want to start.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
How long do you expect this operation to take place since we talked about it on the last one?
Yeah. It really depends on what construction projects come forward as far as how fast they're able to, you know, go through the supply. We don't have an estimate at this time. I mean, I think a lot can happen in three years. I know in the first phase, there's 160,000 cubic yards that's coming out and it's, I mean, that's far below the 1.4 million that's available, so it all depends on what projects are available.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Now we will move on to testimony in support. Testimony in a neutral position? Testimony in opposition? Please come up and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Kurt Eberspacher. We're at 4332 West McElvy Road. We're just north of the plant. My main concerns are, one would be the dust because we can't open our windows now. I mean, and that being roughly six blocks from our house, maybe a little bit more, big concern there. The second one is caution signs. This was noted that the entrance and exit will be on a hill. I've seen numerous people fly down the roads east, west on McElvy and north and south on Northwest 40th. Currently, this project is located down Highway 34 off of Northwest 40th. Their street, their caution signs are probably maybe 200 feet from the exit and entry position. That will not work on this area of the project because I believe you're going to see a lot of accidents. It's not going to be on my dime, it'll be on your guys'. This isn't properly noted with the caution signs. I believe they talked a little bit about the expansion of this project. The current one on the same property to the south of us has been going on for over three years. I can hear the machinery a mile away at our place, so noise will be definitely a factor. Jake breaks, we got drainage, we got farmers going down the roads now, we got them all the time anyway. Maintenance, maintenance is going to be very key to this road during the winter or wet. I mean, even now, I know during the review, I seen that there we're going to put water control, I sure hope so, because the dust is going to be enormous, especially with a south wind on that, or right across from us. One more thing noted is that West McElvy is a school bus road for Malcolm. So, as they said, it's only supposed, there's only supposed to be one drive. Currently, with their project on the south end of this section, we have trucks going north and south, not many, but we do have trucks hauling, and I'm sure it's going to Raymond. But we also have trucks turning west on McElvy and going that way. So, I don't know how we want to try and control that, but we do have trucks movement, whether they're empty or full. And the number of trucks coming out of there, if it's anything like on the south end recently, you got probably almost a dozen trucks an hour if not more. I mean, they are hauling, or hauling back in to this area. So I did send my questions in off the computer, so hopefully that was helpful. That's just some of our main concerns in being out there, so it's going to directly affect us a whole heck of a lot in many ways, not just the dirt, but many ways. So with that, any questions or that's all I have?
Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony. Any other testimony in opposition? Okay. Staff questions? Does anyone have any specific questions, yes?
Yeah.
Come on up, George, thank you.
This might be the traffic guy again.
Yeah, John?
John.
Come on up. Or come on down's better.
Come on down.
Price is right down.
I haven't been called the traffic guy for a while, so it's kind of, thank you for that.
I missed your official title, so maybe that needs to be said to me again.
I'm John Berry, I'm with Lancaster County Engineering. I am the county surveyor.
The county surveyor. So, on these mining operations, sorry, may I go? I didn't, I just jumped right in.
Thank you though for-
On these mining operations, do they all have the four truck minimum?
All the ones-
Or limit unless they report to you?
All the ones that we've seen lately, recently, there are ones, I've been the county surveyor for five years, all the ones I've dealt with are the four loads. So, anything more than that, they notify us.
So then where would a resident, if they're going way over that and it just seems like truck after truck after truck, is there somebody to talk to?
They could definitely call my office, they could also contact George, and we could, we'll get ahold of the correct people. So absolutely.
That's what I needed.
Perfect, excellent, thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
I think it's a legitimate concern where the caution sign is placed. Do we have any control, just to make sure that people truly see it in time to slow down?
As part of their plans, they show, you know, they have to put out signs that say trucks turning and things along that line. There are requirements as far as spacing for signs. That is something definitely we can look at, we can work with the applicant on signage, even if it requires some additional signage, that's something we can take care of.
Especially the hill, yeah, okay, great. I have one more question. George, do you know of another mining project that's nearby that they're referring to?
Yes, that was noted in the staff report.
I apologize, I didn't-
It's a different special permit that was, special permit SP 20014A, and that's south, directly south of this site.
We have no, oh, a different parcel of land.
It's all the similar ownership.
Okay.
Yes, please, Commissioner.
Is there requirements on how far apart two different operations need to be? I didn't think so.
No.
Okay, good questions. Any other questions or comments needed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk with the applicant one more time, please. You want to start?
I have a question.
Go for it.
Did you reach out to the neighbors before you came here?
Yes, we sent all the neighbors a letter and an exhibit of the haul route and just kind of explaining what was going on.
Thank you.
Who would it? Commissioner?
Okay, so the presentation talked about just being on Northwest 40th, heading south to get onto the highway. Neighbors are saying the one that is south of there actually is going up and is on McElvy. So, was that approved for the last one, but it's going to change for the one that's closer to that intersection? That part was a little-
For the previous mining permit to the south, their haul route also goes out to Highway 34, so if there are trucks going north, they're definitely not supposed to be. So, that's something that I know the operator would love to know and correct, but hasn't heard any feedback until making this application.
Yeah, and I would just say it's, as a citizen, probably a little bit challenging to know who you go to.
Well, absolutely.
Do you tell, oh, it's the Health Department for this, but it's-
Absolutely.
LTU, or it's the county engineer, it's the planning department, and so there may be concerns and people may not have known how to get to the right person, so. Hopefully now, this neighbor at least is aware of that they can maybe just contact you directly and then you can start to get some answers, and then that we also know where to go within the government office as well, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you. I think that answers all of our questions. Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve special permit 25035.
Second, Edens.
Okay, who would like to start?
I will. Again, the neighbors' concerns are very valid, but I, hopefully you've gotten some information on who to contact when you have problems in the area, and I think the planning department would also be of assistance in getting you in the right direction if things arise that you haven't spoken of so far. So, I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
I am concerned how close these two projects are. I do think that really, I just worry about dust in the air and how much of our good topsoil is being taken away, so I just wanted to express that concern. I will vote for it because it has followed all the regulations and it's following the safety concerns, and I'm glad that our engineers and folks are checking on the roads and the quality of the roads, but just professionally, I know how important our topsoil and keeping that soil safe is and our air quality, so that's, those are just my, a couple of my concerns about these being so close together.
And I would just add, I will also, because of the reasons that you have mentioned, also be voting in support, but I appreciate that we did pull this off of consent and had a conversation because not only had the neighbor who spoke submitted, but there was also another letter that was also submitted with some concerns about this, so I appreciate that we had the opportunity to ask some questions and get some clarification before we proceed.
Just a comment for my fellow commissioners, the topsoil is stockpiled on site, and then it is respread after the clay has been removed, so the topsoil does go back, but obviously the soil below it hasn't seen the light of day for eons of time.
Appreciate that conversation, everyone. Very nice, very nice. I agree with my fellow commissioners, I think that the process is working. It's nice that we have the opportunity for our neighbors to get a chance to talk about some of the things that's going on in the area, and I appreciate our staff and the applicant for really jumping up and saying, we'll take care of this. The signage is a huge deal, as we all know, as we're driving around. The more you know, the sooner you know, the better you can be as a driver, so thank you for bringing that up also. Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
Seeing none, I would move that we adjourn.
Second, Edens.
Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
We are adjourned.